Can cite certain specific things, and that's how those speed limits are set. So there are cycles that you have to do these on. There's a five-year, a seven-year, a 10-year cycle. There are different, there's different reasons you can waiver it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bother you with that. But, but the challenge that we have here, and then what we're bringing to you tonight, is that for some reason, someone at some point in time decided to put all those changed speed limits in the municipal code. And the reason we think that's inappropriate is that the council doesn't have authority to change the results of an engineering and traffic survey. So bringing it to you in the form of an ordinance, and then waiting a month, and then having a second hearing, and then waiting 60 days before it's in effect, seems to be a little bit senseless. Whereas, in fact, all we need to do to change those is get the engineering and traffic survey, repost the speed limits where appropriate, provide a copy to the police department, they provide a copy to the magistrate, and then the education and enforcement section can begin. Now, having said all that, I want to be very clear, like I said in the staff report, is that does not mean the council is completely stripped of its ability to get speed limits that you want to see through your community. If you decide that there's a section of roadway that you think is just too fast, it's completely within your authority to say, "Mr. City Engineer, I want you to make some changes out there." Either change the geometry in the sections of that roadway, install some traffic control devices, install some traffic calming devices, get that speed to a different speed. And we install those devices, then we can go out and we resurvey that section of roadway, and if the 85th percentile number shows that, we can do that.
We did that on Monterey Street.
Yes, sir. That's how it got down to 15, correct?
15, yeah.
Yeah. So it can be done. It can be done. It just can't be done based on the results of this E N T S. So all this ordinance is suggesting to you tonight is to change the language in that section of setting speed zones that simply says, "You're gonna follow state law in setting speed limits." And if as a result of that, if, if the council would like me to give you a memorandum every time we do an E N T S that tells you, "Oh, by the way, we're changing the speed limits here and here," I'm happy to do that. Happy to give you that information, and if you decide that that generates some interest in you, and you want to hear about that at an open session, happy to do that, too. Happy to bring it forward. But what I would like to do is to be able to implement the results of that speed survey in a pretty administrative fashion, like we would normally do, and, and not go through what seems to be an unnecessary and potentially unsatisfying situation, because I really, you know, what do we do if we bring an engineering and traffic survey here that says, "Well, that speed limit's now 45." And you have half a dozen members of the community show up and say, "That's too fast. It needs to be 35. Make it 35." You can't really do that. I guess you could. I mean, you could tell me, "Randy put up 35 mile an hour speed limits." And I guess you could tell Commander Meisner, Commander Meisner write tickets for that. But the first person who challenges that is gonna go before the magistrate and say, "I've got the engineering and traffic survey for that street. It says 45 miles an hour." And the magistrate's gonna look at the officer like, "What is the matter with you? Why are you writing tickets for people there?" And send them on their way. So we're just trying to make this so that it actually works within the system and the way the current laws. And I'd be happy to take that.
If I read this correctly, then it would be defined as a quote, "speed trap," unquote. Am I right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's in, it's in the law, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Quick ones. So what we're doing is, is basically amending the ordinance. So we're deleting all those specified speed limits for various streets.
Yes.
And then we're saying, "Okay, we're gonna rely on the, the engineering study, which makes it consistent with state law."
Correct, yes, sir.
My, the only question I have about the proposed ordinance language is the title of the section itself.
Okay.
It, it, in, in the language itself, it talks about modifying the speed limits. But in the title, it only talks about increase of speed limit. Couldn't there be an increase or a decrease? Or maybe the better thing would be to modify the speed limit? So you're not talking about which direction you're going. Because it could go either way, right?
You know, so that's a great point. I wish I'd caught that earlier, because I, I think it probably should say, "Setting of speed limit on certain streets." Because you're right, it could be up, down. We don't know. Thank you.
That was my question.
Okay. Lori?
So to dovetail on that question, so you're saying that if the traffic study says a speed, a speed limit on a certain street, you know, based on that 85% test is 25 miles per hour, are you saying the city could actually increase it? I thought it would only be decreased. Would we, would we have authority to increase it? Not that I'm saying we wanted to do that, but it just doesn't-
I don't know that I've ever been presented with that challenge, ma'am. I suppose, no. I, no. Because the range you're allowed in, in that engineering and traffic survey, it, it's gotten very specific now, because there, there's been so much conversation about speed traps. It specifically tells you when, if you're at, you know, 7, you have to go down. If you're at 8, you go up. And, and then there's only these specific things, and then if you, if you're gonna say, "Well, you know, but there's an unknown hazard that the average driver can't see, and it's around the corner, and you're gonna make these very specific findings to drop the speed even lower." I'm, I've never seen it go up like that, based on the E N T S. You, you posed a, you posed a hypothetical that I have not come across.
So it would be, I think setting makes much more sense than, yeah, increase. But, so I had a few questions. So was there an engineering and traffic study recently done?
Yes, there was.
And how often are they conducted, and who pays for them?
We pay for them.
Okay.
They're done on a cycle of five years, seven years, or 10 years. And the reason you can do them in seven or 10-year cycles is if the city traffic engineer can go back and certify that there have been no significant changes on the streets that would have required, that would have increased or decreased the speed limit, you can extend your, your survey life.
And is the survey always citywide, or could it be a specific guest of certain streets?
So it has to be done for every street. It's not prima facie. But if, like in the example I gave, if the council decided that, "Hey, we just don't like that speed limit on this street. Go back and make changes." We could make those changes, and then we could go back and just survey that section, and it would be a standalone report on its own. And what would happen is the next time you updated your E N T S, you would roll it all back into it. Like, that's, that's actually what we did in this report, because one of the things we did not have is we had the posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour on Mission Blue Drive. I, I think someone had originally made the argument that that was prima facie residence. It doesn't actually meet the requirement for residences, and if I remember right, it was Bob that brought that up to us. There's a requirement for how many houses, garages have to actually front on the road for a certain distance. And so we went out and we did a speed survey just on that area a number of years ago now. But then when we just did the update, we rolled them all together.
So what, what is the speed?
It's 25.
It's 25.
It, it still comes out at 25. That's what the 85th percentile of traffic is. But it, when you don't have, when you have a street, that, it's, it's actually interesting, because that's one of the few places where it really talks about speed trap, is if you have a place that really doesn't meet the requirements residential, and you're trying to impose 25 on it, that, they call that a speed trap. And you can't use radar on it, you can't enforce on it. So it's just easier to go back and say, "Look, if you're even close, ju- just do the counts. Just do the traffic counts out there. Put it into your E T Fs."
Right.
And then give your officers the discretion, the, the authority that they need to back up enforcement.
Okay. And then I had asked you in email about Valley Drive, because-
Yes.
There's like three different-
Yep.
-speed limits there, and you had said that it actually has now been revised by the study to be consistent.
Yes. They're all gonna be consistent.
What is the going, what is the speed going to be there?
I believe, I believe it all went to 45.
Okay.
The three reaches of it.
Okay.
And the only one that's gonna remain is the sign back here, as you come around the corner, it's, so that, that should have never been posted as a black-on-white sign, because a black-on-white sign is, is what's considered a statutory sign, that's an enforceable sign. It always should have been a, a black-on-yellow sign, which is advisory. That's not an enforceable sign. It's just telling the public, you know, "Hey, something's here that you need to slow down for." Like in this particular case, it's a curve. Do, do 25 on it, and then you come around, and then you'll get into the 45 zone.
Says 40 in your report for, uh, Valley Drive.
Yeah. Top of the page, too.
Just on your, is this-
Well, you've been beating me up for three hours, sir. Of course, I, you got me on something.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. It's 40.
We took five miles per hour off you. Slow you down.
See, you won. You won, you win, sir. You could have those five miles an hour.
Well, that's good, because 45 seems really fast when there's trucks barreling down that.
You know, it actually, it, it does make more sense that it's 40, because it was 35 at the far westernmost end. So that was brought up to 40.
Okay, so it's good. It's 40.
It's 40, yes, ma'am. I, I clearly misspoke.
Okay. So how, how, when will those signs be reposted?
As soon as we can get them ordered and-
Okay.
They're on order, we just need to get them in, and we need to get them installed. We've got a couple of them. We've got a, just a few spots throughout town that are changing like that, but mostly what we have are some existing, we actually brought in an outside person to do this. Sometimes we do this in-house, sometimes we don't. We brought in an outside person. It's good to have a, a new set of eyes on it, because they, they had a couple of places, they said, "Well, you know, maybe you don't have quite enough signs here. That sign's too low. That sign's not big enough." And, and they were right, across the board. We weren't meeting current traffic control device standards, so we're gonna get all that corrected.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately, or fortunately, you have to figure the 85%, because there's streets where people consistently drive too fast, it seems to me. And not necessarily here in town, but we've all been on, on different streets that feel they're much too fast, so I think it's interesting that this limits our ability to set speeds if people are consistently. Now, say on Tunnel, where we have the settlement-
The seasonal traffic calming devices?
The, the-
The hoop-de-hoops? The settlement? Yes, ma'am, I'm being light-hearted.
Is that, is that an extraordinary condition that you can-
It is.
-set a lower speed for?
It is, sure, absolutely.
Because of poor road condition, or-
Exactly.
Or no guardrails along, or Sierra Point?
Exactly.
There's, you know, an open waterway on one side. So those are things you could take into account.
Yeah. And I like the idea that you had suggested about, you know, you had said you could, we could have like a memo, you know, just so we're aware of when there's-
Sure.
-a change. But what I, what I think would be even better would be to put something in the, the city news about, you know, please be aware there's been a change to the, um, speed limit, especially if it's a decrease, so that people are aware of the change.
On the website.
Yeah, put it on the website, too.
Not a problem. I can do that, sure.
With that, I'd move to-
Done it?
That's it.
Approve.
Okay.
I'm good. You guys covered it.
I had one question. David, did you review this?
I did, and I approved it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I don't have your signature on here, that's why. You didn't sign the copy of it that we got, so that's why I asked.
Oh, sorry about that, and I'll be sure to, to sign it.
Okay.
Right after the meeting.
Okay. All right. Very good. So Terry made a motion, and do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, but with the understanding, is that one word change?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yes, as amended.
Okay. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Got two minutes. Get through the rest of the city manager's report.
The only item was that we needed to change the date of the community center park dedication, and I think we're thinking of May 3rd.
Okay.
We better check Dennis Bussi's schedule though, first. To make sure that he can make it, because, uh, yeah.
So we gotta make sure you can make it.
No, I already checked in with Terry, so, yeah. May 3rd works.
Okay.
Wouldn't be so to give a quick report on when the soil's M U is coming?
Yes, uh, we will be having that item on our April 21st agenda, the memorandum of agreement between the city and UPC.
Mayor, council matters, countywide assignment, subcommittee reports.
One quick update. There is a C CAG retreat this coming Thursday at 6:30. I just got an email that said, while I had been invited to it, it said to encourage the other council members to attend, and it looks like it is exempt from Brown Act, because it's a retreat. So they said to extend the invitation, and I will do so. Dinner will be provided for invited guests.
What, what time is it?
6:30.
6:30.
Um, in San Carlos on this coming Thursday.
Samtrans Building, yeah.
At the Samtrans Building.
The Samtrans Building, okay.
Okay. Ray, you and I had, well, I guess we met and hammered out, took the tour of the baylands and hammering out the, uh, M O A, or memorandum of agreement with UPC, and that should be coming forth when, May 30?
April 21st.
April 21st, okay. Second meeting April. Okay. Any other subcommittee meetings?
Um, well, both Cliff and I went to the awards dinner for sustainable San Mateo County, and Cliff had one thing he wanted to report. I have two other things that you can report, if you think. The two things I wanted to report, one of the awardees was an architect for designing of an energy-efficient school in Redwood City. And what was interesting is that they were able to do better in energy efficiency than Title 24, which is the energy part of the building code, by 77%. That was pretty impressive, uh, energy-efficient potential, and this for a school. So that was pretty good. And the second thing is that we had a conversation with the county's sustainability guy, Kim Springer, and it seems like a lot of the programs that have been in hiatus because of funding are now popping up again, and the green business certification is one of them. Uh, and the other that he was talking about, what, there were three things, actually, and the other was assistance-
For schools.
Uh, for, yeah, but that's, I was gonna let you talk about. The second one I was gonna talk about was they, they really wanna give us help in the, what they call in climate action plans, but we are calling, you know, the Energy Efficiency Plan, or whatever. They have a lot of resources to help us with that, and he was offering that, and so I think we oughta get moving on that, and that the county is willing to help. And then the third thing was-
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we had a really nice conversation with Kim Springer. Kim had, had made a presentation to the C M E C committee in regards to that partnership with, you know, helping school districts to make their buildings more energy efficient, and looking at ways to, um, to partner with, with P G and E to get financing that, um, to, to implement those, um, those capabilities, and doing it in a way where, um, you, the, the loans are so far out, and they're interest, they're zero interest, and so you, the savings that you reap from, uh, doing the work helps pay for actual installation. So it's, uh, I think it's a pretty cool, cool, uh, program. So, um, and that, and I think that is one of the things we're gonna talk about when we have our two-by-two meeting. And, um, yeah. It's, yeah, I can keep going if you want, or Laura, you got some?
Oh, well, I just had a, a few, a few of the subcommittees that I, I'm on. So Terry and I are on the planning issues subcommittee, and we've met a couple times. We're still talking about the parking and setback ordinance update. We're still concerning a couple issues there, and I think we're gonna have a meeting on that, um, in the, in the future, in the near future. With respect to the grading ordinance, we met and talked about that, and the, what was brought to us was the question of whether we wanted to add anything into the ordinance to address the Bayland soil processing operations. And the conclusion we came to was that we would leave that to the M O U. So we didn't make any changes to that. So, um, that should, uh, come before the council, I suppose, at some point. I met on the technology subcommittee with Clark a couple weeks ago, and we talked about our social media policy, and Caroline is gonna be doing some work on that, connecting with the city of Fremont, which we learned about at the conference in Sacramento in January, to see what, what they're doing there. And on economic development, we're meeting every other week, twice, or twice a month. And most recently, we met with the quarry operators, had a very interesting discussion with them, and we're awaiting the report from U L I, um, Crocker Industrial Park, to hopefully move forward with re-envisioning the quarry and continuing our conversation with the quarry operators.
That's good.
Yeah. No? Well said. Wednesday night, we had the roundtable meeting, and, um, I'm sure all of you know that the environmental assessment for the Wapton project, excuse me, the NorCal Wapton project, it was released, um, last week. Prior to the, uh, the roundtable meeting, we had a subcommittee meeting just to get an understanding of how to perceive comments, understanding what, um, public workshop meetings will be about. So, um, the document, um, you know, that's what I spent my time over the weekend reading, because it was pretty darn thick. Throughout the document, the, the F A A acknowledged that they are not flying the designated flight procedures. The reason that they say that is because of the inefficient system that is currently in place. Right now, they, they have these land-based navigational aids, and they're going to a GPS navigational system. And with that, um, because the, the flights can be more predictable, then that means less vectoring will have to occur. And at our meeting on Wednesday, one of the F A A representatives said that vectoring causes noise issues. I believe that the, the reason why Brisbane has so many noise issues right now is because of that train. Planes were vectored because there's other planes in the sky. Planes were vectored because there are no planes in the sky, and thus, it's safe to do so. And so, um, by having this system in place, um, I think there are some possibilities that Brisbane can experience some relief in noise issues. The designated, uh, new flight procedure is supposed to take the flights up the bay and have them turn west near Candlestick instead of, um, over Brisbane. But of course, uh, you know, planes, uh, can be vectored at any time. There's a lot of weather issues. There are other issues, too. But if conditions are, are good, then the plane should be sent across the baylands and then, uh, down, you know, heading their way down south. So hopefully, we'll see what happens. I mean, I, I, I think that the reason why the F A A has put this in place, because of all of the folks in Brisbane saying, "Hey, you know, you gotta do, you gotta do this right. You know, this is, this is wrong, what, you know, what you're doing." And, um, so I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that in Brisbane, things will be better. I, you know, uh, you know, being the chair, I have to be looking out for everybody, and so, um, you know, there, there are these workshops are happening next week. So the first one is, um, that's local, is in Oakland. It's gonna be on the 15th. The San Mateo County one is gonna be on the 17th. I believe the, the hours are from 4 to 8. And that is gonna be in, um, San Mateo, at San Mateo Library. Then on the 18th, there's gonna be, um, a public workshop in San Francisco. So each workshop is gonna be, um, run the same way. So if you want to go to the San Francisco one, because it's closer, then, um, you know, you're not missing anything if you, if you don't go to the San Mateo one. One of the things that the Roundtable decided to do was write a letter to the F A, because as we know through our own draft, the I R process, that there are mistakes in drafts, there's existencies, you know, there's things that are, that are missing. And so one of the, one of the main things that's missing from the document is, is altitude for these flight procedures. They show where they're going, but they don't, the altitude. And so, um, we, as Roundtable, have written a letter to the F A asking that they extend the comment period for an additional 60 days. Congresswomen, S U, and Spear have also written a letter. I have requested, um, Senator Boxer's office to do that, and, uh, Wegert, uh, from, uh, who's currently the, the mayor of Palo Alto, is reaching out to Senator Feinstein to have her also write a letter. And I've talked to Jerry Hill and Kevin Mullin, and I believe that they will be writing letters as well. But I think that it would be important for us as a city to also write a letter. I should have, you know, forwarded the Roundtable letter to staff so that it could be in your, um, packet, so that you could at least have looked at it and said, "Yeah, okay, yeah, let's write a letter similar to that." But, um, hopefully, that is something that the council would be interested in doing. I did see an email from Peter Grace, as you know, who's been very, um, you know, just, just applied a ton of energy into helping our airplane noise issue. And in his email, he, he talked about, you know, people writing letters to the F A. I don't know so much to the extent of, uh, extending the comment period, but I, I would highly recommend that, that people in Brisbane write that letter to the F A to extend the comment period. So, yeah, it's pretty detailed.
Do, do we have that information to put this on our website, so that, um, the dates and the times of meetings and, and, and possible outcome that we can-
Yeah, it, it's-
The E I R.
The I R is on the website, right?
I'm not sure the dates are on there.
Okay.
They probably are, but I-
Yeah, you know, and-
Find out and put them on.
Yeah, you know, and going to, um, going to the website, you have to download the document in order to use this overlay procedure to see, uh, the new flight, um, to see the new flight procedures. So you can, it, it's, it's actually a pretty cool, um, thing that they got going on. So it's, it's Exhibit 38. And basically, you know, you download the document, and then you go to that page, and it, it explains how to, to navigate it. And so you can click on, say, the port departure, the one that goes over Brisbane, and then you can see where that, um, that flight path is. You could do the gap that-
The suggested flight path.
The, yes, the proposed. But, um, as, as we know, this thing is, you know, it's a done deal. I mean, uh, you know, there, none of the other Wapton projects have, uh, you know, some balance. They have these, you know, Fonzie's, which, you know, finding notes in the Canadian pack. And really, you know, um, you know, the changes that they are proposing are very small in comparison to, you know, like if they were going to change, you know, flight patterns in a, in a significant way. They're, they're just minor tweaks, especially where we are, because the, uh, the airspace is so congested. So.
Okay. Any other reports? The written communications that we have were for the junkie purchase, and Item C is set dates for upcoming budget review and adoption. We have some proposed dates here.
Oh, just one thing before you, the written communications for next week's agenda, L A C O requirement, we could probably have that on the next agenda.
For the council and cities?
Right.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Waiting for the mayor.
Dates?
The dates, this is the proposed schedule that we have in our agenda packet?
Yeah, and, and Lori and I had a conversation this afternoon. She had some conflicts with particularly the 28th and also the 9th. So I was gonna suggest, and I did talk with Stewart, he would be available on the 20-
27th, which is a Tuesday for the overview. And then if we could maybe do the departmental budgets on the 2nd, as we've suggested here, and then maybe also on the 3rd.
The 27th of May?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's a Tuesday after Memorial Day.
The Monday is the holiday, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I've got a conflict on May 27th.
Okay, well, I mean, then that week shot.
Okay. Can't do Thursday?
No, I can't.
Okay. So what other days we got?
What about that Wednesday, the week before?
Um, can we say, we could tentatively say yes, I'm, I mean, obviously I need to talk with Stuart and make sure.
Of course, yes.
Yeah.
Right, just picking a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So Wednesday, the 21st?
Wednesday, the 21st?
Yeah.
That will conflict with Parks and Recreation Commission? I maybe have to talk to them about moving them around.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to have that meeting during that week.
Right.
Because council is going to be going dark in July.
Right.
So we're going to nail this thing down.
Oh, are we doing it July again this year?
Well, we, we don't, you haven't set a summer schedule yet, so just
Yeah, I'm going to be
No, but Ray's out of town, I mean, you've already set your
I'm going to be out of town the whole month of August, I'm taking a damn vacation this year.
I'll be out the first two weeks.
Can I refocus you on the budget? Another time, so
It's getting late.
Yeah. May 21st will tentatively for the budget overview.
Okay.
And then June 2nd and June 3rd for the departmentals. And then June 16th for the adoption.
Okay.
Okay.
Second and 3rd?
Yes.
The 16th is a council meeting night?
Correct.
So it would be at that meeting?
It's a regular council meeting night.
All right, so Monday and Tuesday, June 2nd and June 3rd?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I have my usual Tuesday conflict, but, okay.
These are all 7:30, Clay?
Yeah.
Okay, so tentatively, May 21st?
Correct.
And then Monday, June 2nd and Tuesday, June 3rd and Monday, June 16th for adoption. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do everybody agree with that? Not hearing anything otherwise, item D, set dates for city manager and city attorney annual review.
So historically, as most of you are aware, we've done this prior to a council meeting. Another thought would be just to dedicate one off Monday night and you could start at 7:00 or 7:30 and just do them back to back. And I was, if, if that, if you wanted to do that, we could do it maybe April 28th.
Everybody okay with the 28th?
I'm good with April 28th.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what time would that be? Because I, I do prefer when we have it on a separate night than a council, rather than before a council meeting. It's easier for me to start at 7:30 if possible.
Sure. David will take 7:30 to 10 and I'll take 10 to 10:30.
The reverse actually.
So April 28th, 7:30?
Yeah.
And it's going to be an hour for each of you? Hour and a half?
Yeah, I mean, usually I think we can schedule an hour and see what happens. Do you want dinner? I'm just asking the question.
Just trying to butter us up.
No, no, no.
If it's at 7:30.
No, we're doing it at 7:30.
Sorry, 7:30, probably didn't just say.
Okay.
Drinks are fine now.
Yeah.
Soft drink.
Just kidding.
Do the review at 23 Club.
Okay, all right, so we got that set, so brings oral communications, number two, there's nobody left in the house. Bring this to adjournment at 11:05.
Okay.
Okay, in memory of Glenn Allison. Thank you.
Thank you.